You're asking why the district clerk is over here talking and starting the meeting. I'm calling the meeting to order at 8:07 PM. Under school law, right now, the board does not have a president or any vice presidents, and the district clerk runs the reorganizational meeting, so that fell on me. So please rise and join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I please have a motion to move into the organizational meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So carried. Okay, the first order of business is to administer the oath of office to our new reelected board members, who are Hassan Ahmed and Maria Malave. So who wants to go first? Ladies first, please. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Maria Malave.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Trustee.
Trustee.
Of the Brentwood Union Free School District.
Trustee of the Brentwood Union Free School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, trustee.
Thank you.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Hassan Ahmed.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Trustee.
Trustee.
Of the Brentwood Union Free School District.
Of the Brentwood Union Free School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, trustee.
Thank you.
So our next order of business is to elect the president of the Board of Education. And are there any, let me find my chichi, any nominations for president?
I nominate Eileen Felix.
I second it.
Any other nominations? We'll do a roll call vote. For those who. You don't need to second on a nomination. What? Oh, yeah. You accept the nomination?
I do.
Sure. Final answer.
Yes.
Okay, those of you in favor of Eileen Felix as president of the Board of Education for the 2025-2026 school year. Hassan Ahmed?
Yes.
Julie Burgos?
Yes.
Cynthia Seferi?
Yes.
Eileen Felix?
Yes.
Brandon Garcia?
Yes.
Eileen Harmon?
Yes.
Maria Malave?
Yes.
Ms. Felix, you are unanimously elected president of the Board. Come on down. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Eileen Felix.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
President.
President.
Of the Brentwood Union Free School District Board of Education.
Brentwood Union Free School District Board of Education.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Now, at this point, I go back to obscurity and Ms. Felix takes over as president.
Thank you all for your trust in me. I believe that together, as a Board of Education, a district, a community, we will continue to propel this district forward, one student at a time. So I thank you for your trust and your partnership. Okay. Do I have any nominations for the position of first vice president of the Brentwood Board of Education?
I nominate Julia Burgos.
I have a nomination for Julia Burgos as first vice president of the Brentwood Board of Education made by Hassan Ahmed. Julie Burgos, do you accept this nomination?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations for the position of first vice president of the Brentwood Board of Education? Are there any other nominations for the position of first vice president of the Brentwood Board of Education? Are there any other nominations for the position of first vice president of the Brentwood Board of Education? Nominations are declared closed. We will begin the vote for first vice president of the Brentwood Board of Education by roll call. Those in favor of Julia Burgos as Brentwood Board of Education first vice president? Hassan Ahmed?
Yes.
Julie Burgos?
Yes.
Cynthia Seferi?
Yes.
Eileen Felix? Yes. Brandon Garcia?
Yes.
Eileen Harmon?
Yes.
Maria Malave?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Julie Burgos.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Julia Burgos.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
First vice president.
First vice president.
Of the Brentwood Union Free School District.
Of the Brentwood Union Free School District.
Board of Education.
Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities. Thank you.
Congratulations, Julie Burgos. You have been appointed as first vice president of the Brentwood Board of Education for the 2025-2026 school year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do I have any nominations for the position of second vice president of the Brentwood Board of Education?
I nominate Cynthia Seferi.
I have a nomination for Cynthia Seferi as second vice president of the Brentwood Board of Education made by Julie Burgos. Cynthia Seferi, do you accept this nomination?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations for the position of second vice president of the Brentwood Board of Education? Are there any other nominations for the position of second vice president of the Brentwood Board of Education? Are there any other nominations for the position of second vice president of the Brentwood Board of Education? Nominations are declared closed. We will begin the vote for second vice president of the Brentwood Board of Education by roll call. Those in favor of Cynthia Seferi as Brentwood Board of Education second vice president, Those in favor of Cynthia Seferi as Brentwood Board of Education second vice president, Hassan Ahmed?
Yes.
Julia Burgos?
Yes.
Cynthia Seferi?
Yes.
Eileen Felix?
Yes.
Brandon Garcia?
Yes.
Eileen Harmon?
Yes.
Maria Malave?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Cynthia Seferi. You have been appointed as second vice president of the Brentwood Board of Education for the 2025-2026 school year. Cynthia Seferi, please take the oath of office as second vice president.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Cynthia Seferi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Second vice president.
Second vice president.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Brentwood Union Free School District.
Of the Brentwood Union Free School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Appointment of district officers. District clerk interim of the Board of Education. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints Dennis Logan to serve as district clerk interim commencing -- sorry, I'm gonna have to make a motion to amend. I'm sorry, I need a motion to amend?
Motion.
Motion by Julia Burgos. I need a second.
Second.
Second, Cynthia Seferi. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. We're changing the commencing date from July 2nd to July 1st. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints Dennis Logan to serve as district clerk interim commencing July 1st, 2025 through July 30th, 2025, and be it further resolved that in the event of Mr. Logan's absence, it is recommended that Stacy O'Connor be designated as the unpaid substitute district clerk, and be it further resolved that the constitutional oath of office be administered to the district clerk interim by the president of the Board of Education. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Eileen Harmon. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Maria Malave. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. I.
I. Dennis M. Logan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties of.
Interim district clerk.
District clerk of the Brentwood Union Free School Districts.
According to the best of my.
Best of my abilities.
You know this already. You didn't need me.
I didn't finish the sentence.
You didn't need me.
Thank you all for your confidence.
Thank you.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints Nancy Corolo, district treasurer, for the 2025-2026 school year, and be it further resolved that her annual salary for the 2025-2026 school year shall be $23,198.13, and be it further resolved that in the event of Ms. Corolo's absence, it is recommended that Deborah Banker be designated as the unpaid substitute treasurer to act when necessary during the year, and be it further resolved that the constitutional oath of office be administered by the district treasurer by the district clerk interim. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Eileen Harmon. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Julia Burgos. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. District purchasing. Congratulations.
Come on down. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Treasurer.
Treasurer.
Of the Brentwood Union Free School District.
Of the Brentwood Union Free School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints Daniel Calderon, district purchasing agent, for the 2025-2026 school year, and be it further resolved that in the event of Mr. Calderon's absence, it is recommended that Eric Carlin be designated as the unpaid substitute purchasing agent to act when necessary during the school year, and be it further resolved that the constitutional oath of office be administered to the district purchasing agent by the district clerk interim. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Eileen Harmon. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Brandon Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Noes? Abstentions?
Yes.
Okay. Danny? Listen.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state my name. State your name.
I, Daniel Calderon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the State of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Purchasing agents.
Purchasing agent.
Of the Brentwood Union Free School Districts.
Of the Brentwood Union Free School Districts.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir.
Thanks.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the audit committee charter and appoints the following members to the district's 2025-2026 audit committee. Hassan Ahmed, Cynthia Seferi, Ellen Edelstein, Kelly DeMassimo, and Manuel Choach. Be it further resolved that the constitutional oath of office shall be administered to the district audit committee by the district clerk interim. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Eileen Harmon. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Maria Malave. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Noes? Abstentions? So moved.
Okay, so who's here? I see Ellen.
All of us.
Oh, you're all here. Come on up. Let's do all your ones. Okay. You guys can stand right here, and I'll stand over on this side.
Okay.
Okay. Cynthia drunk. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ellen Edelstein.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Member of the district audit committee.
And the district audit committee.
Of the Brentwood Union Free School Districts.
Of the Brentwood Union Free School Districts.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, I got a sign.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints Serini and Associates as claims auditor for the 2025-2026 school year at an annual fee of $33,675. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Brandon Garcia. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Eileen Harmon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints EFPR as external auditor for the 2025-2026 school year at an annual fee of $44,000. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Brandon Garcia. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Cynthia Seferi. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Noes? Abstentions? So moved. District records officer and appeals officer. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints the district clerk to serve as the district records officer for the 2025-2026 school year and will be responsible for responding to all Freedom of Information law FOIL requests, and be it further resolved that it is recommended that the superintendent of schools shall be appointed the records appeals officer for the 2025-2026 school year. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Hassan Ahmed. I need a second.
Second.
Second by.
Hassan Ahmed.
Maria.
Cynthia.
That was you, Cynthia Seferi? I need a, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved.
Please, friends.
Okay, do you want to do that now?
Yes, I'll do it.
Okay.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Wanda Ortiz Rivera.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Superintendent of schools.
Superintendent of schools.
Of the Brentwood Union Free School Districts.
Of the Brentwood Union Free School Districts.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Legal counsel. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the following firms to continue providing board and labor counseling services to the district from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. Duties to be performed are as follows. Von Shoniken King, PLLC, general counsel services, retainer $60,000, hourly rate $275. Ingraham Smith, LLP, labor counsel services, retainer is $60,000, hourly rate $275. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Cynthia Seferi. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Hassan Ahmed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Fiscal advisor. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints Munistat as the fiscal advisor for the 2025-2026 school year, and be it further resolved that Munistat shall be compensated on an annual basis for providing fiscal advice related to VANS, TANs, SEC filings, and bond issues, and be it further resolved that the president of the Board of Education is hereby authorized the agreement on behalf of the district. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Julia Burgos. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Maria Malave. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Internal auditor. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints Noraki Smith, LLP, as internal auditor for the 2025-2026 school year at the following hourly rates. Partner, $200, manager, $175, supervisor, $150, senior, $125, and staff, $100. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Eileen Harmon. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Brandon Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Title IX compliance officers. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints the following individuals as the district's Title IX compliance officers for the 2025-2026 school year. Assistant superintendent of secondary education, assistant superintendent for elementary education, assistant superintendent of special education, school personnel officer, director of programs and policy. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Julia Burgos. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Cynthia Seferi. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Noes? Abstentions? So moved. 504 compliance officer. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints the assistant superintendent of special services as the district's 504 compliance officer for the 2025-2026 school year. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Eileen Harmon. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Maria Malave. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Noes? Abstentions? So moved. Medicaid compliance officer. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints the assistant superintendent of special services as the district's Medicaid compliance officer for the 2025-2026 school year. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Julia Burgos. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Cynthia Seferi. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Asbestos compliance officer. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby appoints the director of facilities three as the asbestos compliance officer for the 2025-2026 school year. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Brandon Garcia. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Eileen Harmon. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved. Chief Emergency Officer, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints the Director of School Safety as the district's Chief Emergency Officer as required by Education Law Section 28-A, 2801-A, and the Implementing Regulations Section 155.17A for the 2025-2026 school year. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Brandon Garcia, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Julia Burgos, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved. Data Protection Officer, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby appoints the Director of Information Technology and Libraries as the Data Protection Officer for the 2025-2026 school year. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Hassan Ahmed, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Aileen Harmon, all in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstentions, so moved. Consent Agenda, be it resolved that the following items be approved, 6A and 6B. I need a motion.
Motion.
Thank you Candace. All right, be it resolved that the following items be approved, 6A and 6B. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Julia Burgos, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Cindy Safari, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved. Be it resolved that the following items be approved, 7A through 7H. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Hassan Ahmed, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Aileen Harmon, all in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstentions, so moved. For information only, district-owned cell phones to be in compliance with the District Cell Phone Policy Number 8332. A list of employees requiring district-owned cell phones is being presented to the Board of Education for review. I need a motion to adjourn the reorganizational portion of tonight's meeting. Motion by Julia Burgos, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Hassan Ahmed, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved. All right. I am calling the business meeting portion of tonight's meeting to order. Do we have any questions on agenda items from the audience or anyone at home? Okay. Financial reports, the June 2025 financial reports will be submitted at the August 2025 meeting. This is necessary as the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations prepares to close the fiscal records for the 2024-2025 school year. Consent Agenda, be it resolved that the following items be approved, B2A through B2BB. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Cindy Safari, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Aileen Harmon, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstentions.
So moved. Thank you Julia. Be it resolved that the following items be approved, C1A and C1B. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Cindy Safari, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Brandon Garcia, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved. D1A, Appointments, Resignations, and Leaves, Certified Personnel. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the Certified Personnel Action Report contained in the Board Packet for the July 8th, 2025 Board Meeting. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Julia Burgos, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Aileen Harmon, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved. D1B, Appointments, Resignations, and Leaves, Non-Certificated Personnel. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the Non-Certificated Personnel Action Report contained in the Board Packet for the July 8th, 2025 Board Meeting. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Cindy Safari, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Julia Burgos, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved. D1C, BCA Memorandum of Agreement. A motion, I'm sorry, whereas the July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2025 labor agreement between the Brentwood Union Free School District and the Brentwood clerical association expires on June 30th, 2025 and whereas representatives of the respective parties have engaged in negotiations for a successor agreement to the expiring labor agreement and whereas representatives of the district and BCA reached an agreement for a successor agreement for the period from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2030 that has been memorialized in a memorandum that has been reviewed by the Board of Education and whereas the membership of BCA have ratified said memorandum of agreement, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the memorandum of agreement herein above referenced. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Brandon Garcia, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Hassan Ahmed, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved. Sorry, I need a sec. D1D, Salary and Benefits Agreement, First Amendment. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the Board of Education hereby approves the First Amendment to the Salary and Benefits Agreement dated June 20th, 2024 for Matthew Gangler, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education and authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute the agreement on behalf of the district. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Brandon Garcia, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Maria Malave, all in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstentions, so moved. D1E, Employment Agreement. Be it resolved that the Board President is authorized to execute an employment agreement dated July 8th, 2025 with Kevin O'Reilly to provide transitional services to the Coordinator of Health, Physical Education, and Athletics. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Julia Burgos, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Cindy Safari, all in favor?
Aye.
So the second was by Aileen Harmon?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry Aileen.
It's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstentions, so moved. FIPSO Impact Pay, be it resolved that the President of the Board of Education is authorized to execute an agreement with FIPSO dated July 8th, 2025 regarding the provision of impact pay to certain unit members for the performance of additional responsibilities. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Hassan Ahmed, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Cindy Safari, all in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstentions, so moved. Don't dwindle on me guys, say it with your chest. Into the microphone so I can hear the voices and know who I'm calling. D1G, Retiree Summer Work. Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes remuneration to certain recently retired professionals, staff members of the Brentwood Union Free School District identified in Confidential Attachment A to provide instructional services at the district during summer 2025 for a period of time not to exceed 25 days. The remuneration shall be at the retired professional staff members' daily rate for the 2025-20... Sorry, 2024-2025 school year also set forth in Confidential Attachment A. I need a motion.
Motion.
Hassan Ahmed, I need a second.
Second.
Oh, Aileen Harmon, I knew it was you. All in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstentions, so moved. D1H, Administrative Table of Organization, Assistant Principal Secondary. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints Maria Bolesis Wasusuk as Assistant Principal Secondary for a four-year probationary period effective August 15, 2025 through August 14, 2029 at a salary as set forth in the negotiated agreement between the Brentwood Union Free School District and the Brentwood Principals and Supervisors Organization, FIPSO. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Maria Malave, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Julia Burgos, all in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstentions, so moved. Congratulations Maria. Welcome to the Brentwood family. D1I, Administrative Table of Organization, Assistant Principal Secondary. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints Stefan Lenardi as Assistant Principal Secondary for a three-year probationary period effective August 15, 2025 through August 14, 2028 at a salary as set forth in the negotiated agreement between the Brentwood Union Free School District and the Brentwood Principals and Supervisors Organization, FIPSO. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Cindy Safari, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Brandon Garcia, all in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstentions, so moved. Congratulations. Welcome to our Brentwood family. D1J, Administrative Table of Organization, Assistant to the Coordinator of Performing Arts, Music, and Art. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints Alyssa Sitler as Assistant to the Coordinator of Performing Arts, Music, and Art for a four-year probationary period effective July 14, 2025 through July 13, 2029 at a salary as set forth in the negotiated agreement between the Brentwood Union Free School District and the Brentwood Principals and Supervisors Organization, FIPSO. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Brandon Garcia, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Maria Malave, all in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstentions, so moved. Congratulations. And welcome to the Brentwood family.
Welcome back.
Well, it's new. New title. D1K, School Medical Director. Be it resolved that the Board President is authorized to enter into an agreement with Susan Averso and the Brentwood Principals and Supervisors Organization, FIPSO, regarding compensation for the position of School Medical Director for the 2025-2026 school year. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Aileen Harmon, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Brandon Garcia, all in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstentions, so moved. D1L, First Amendment to Employment Agreement. Be it resolved that the Board President is authorized to execute a First Amendment to the Employment Agreement dated March 11th, 2025 with Dennis Logan, Entram District Clerk, the terms of which have been reviewed by the Board of Education. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Brandon Garcia, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Hassan Ahmed, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved. Items for information only, student enrollment figures. As of May 30th, 2025, 17,742. And we closed on June 27th, 2025 with a total enrollment of 17,649. The June Special Education Enrollment Figures will be submitted at the August 2025 meeting. We have F1 through 3, which are miscellaneous items. They are Board Action Memos and the following policies and regulations are being presented to the Board of Education for information only. Policy 1240, Visitors to the School. Policy 4751, Graduation Ceremonies. Policy 5695, Students and Personal Electronic Devices. Policy 5300, Code of Conduct. Policy 6240, Investments. Board of Education Business Meeting will take place next week, July 17th, 2025. We'll open the floor up for public comment. Any comments, questions from the audience, folks at home? All the new business, one of the floor is yours.
So good evening. What a meeting, right?
Oh my God.
Congratulations to the Board of Education again for an amazing year and I'm sure that we will have another amazing year. And I can say that on Saturday, June 28th, we celebrated 1,349 graduates at the high school. And I know that you have so much to do with this, with all the commitment that you have and your devotion for the Brentwood School District and our students. So I just want to thank you for that. It was an amazing day. A little hot, but it rained a little bit and it was fine. The students were very happy. The families, you know, were also really very impressed by the amount of students that we were able to graduate and the work that they did. So I just want to celebrate you and say thank you for all the work that you have done throughout the year and that you will continue to do next year to ensure that our students graduate with graduation plus. You know, we had that initiative this year and it was amazing.
That's something you should also be congratulated for because your leadership is, you know, far and wide. You know, you walk the walk, talk the talk, or talk the talk and walk the walk, however you want to phrase it. Everybody hears your heels coming down the hall. So they know you are on deck and you are just a welcome breath of fresh air in the district. And we appreciate all that you are doing for our families, our staff, our students, and our community. So, thank you.
And we also thank our high school administration and staff. I know many of them are present.
They are here. Dr. Doolin is here and one of the moments that we looked at each other was when they... All the students moved their tassel, right? And I said, "Oh my God, it was just such a great day, right, for us. We were so proud." I love school, I didn't see. I definitely love school.
You don't leave.
I don't leave, I know, I'm always here. Yes, so thank you to the, you know, the high school administration, the teachers, the counselors, BNG, the safety, you know, other team, also IT, the production team. It takes a village really to get 1,349 kids across the stage. So I just want to thank you and say thank you to everyone for the work that they did for that day. Yesterday, we also started our summer enrichment programs. We have more than 2,000 students already enrolling the program. That is amazing. We still have room. So if you want your child, anyone at home, if you want your child to participate in the, you know, programs that we have, please call Maria Rodriguez at 631-434-2511. She's ready for your call. So please make sure that you do that. Fridays, we have ice cream. So, right, did you order all the ice cream Maria? Is it ready for Friday? So we're ready. So if you want your child to have ice cream on Friday, please enroll in the summer programs also. We also have free breakfast and lunch for anyone 18 or younger. Now until, I believe it's August 15th, we serve the meals 7:30 to 9:00 and also 11:00 in the morning to 12:00 PM. And this is for anyone. It doesn't have to be a Brentwood resident. Anyone is entitled to, anyone that is 18 years or younger is entitled to do that. We have a few locations. It's Hemlock Park, Oak Park, North Elementary, Pine Park, Northeast, South Middle, South Middle School. The meals have to be eaten there. The students have to, right, and the families have to eat the meals there. They cannot take the meals out. But we have that also. Also next Thursday, we are going to have Dr. Leonie and Byron McCray. They are going to speak about the district-wide safety plan that we have here at the district and also the new cell phone policy. So I invite everyone to watch or just to come here and see your presentation. And I also want Ms. Connor to talk a little bit about the constructions that we have here and the parking situation at the high school.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, I'll start with the high school, the construction that's going on there. We have summer school, which is going to be starting on Thursday, the main program, I should say. Some smaller programs already started on Monday. We have drop-off here at the Administration Building or the Stein Drive Gate. Please do not drive onto the high school property itself to drop- Please do not drive onto the high school property itself to drop off children. You won't be able to get there, but we're doing the parking lot there, a lot of sewerage that's within the parking lot as well. So there's the Third Avenue gate in the administration parking lot or the Stein Drive gate, there'll be security there, we'll have signs up to direct parents where they can drop off and to help direct the students to the school. Also, children, students, I should say, parking that are attending summer school, the traditional summer school, we're going to let those that have licenses, insurance, and all that get a parking pass to park within the administration building. That's only a select number of students who can potentially graduate this August. It's very limited parking here at the administration building with so many students attending summer school, so the other students that choose to drive and not get dropped off, they can park on Third Avenue, they can park at the recreation center. So they have alternate places to park, but they're not going to be allowed onto our property, the students, unless they have that driving pass. And they could talk to Jerry Chang at the high school, and he'll help them get that parking pass as long as they have the proper identification and paperwork that they need. In terms of construction, I think this is our busiest summer yet, and I say that every year, and every year we add more projects. We have at least 190 projects going on throughout the district. It ranges from bathrooms to ceiling tiles, like you've seen we've done in a lot of our buildings, to roofs, we're doing a tremendous number of roofs. So we're just starting that now, but it's, the 9/11 Memorial is getting done, that's at the high school, so we're going to be ready to go in September for that on 9/11. It's just projects everywhere throughout the district, windows also at the high school, but we'll report back because we're just getting started now, so as it progresses, we'll certainly let you know how it's going. So far, so good, I don't even have wood here. But yeah, we're really proud of all the improvements we're making throughout the district, and you've seen that in the past few years, all that's happened, and there's even more coming.
Thank you, thank you. I also want to thank my cabinet, our cabinet, you know, they don't really get too much, sometimes they're always working. During the summer, many of our teachers and administrators are out, and they are here working. So I just really want to thank you for all the work that you do and for your commitment to our students. Without you, we could not be where we are, and the students that cross the stage was also because of you. So I just want to say thank you.
Any questions, comments from the board? No? All right. All right, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting at, what does that say? 9:57 p.m.?
Motion.
8:57 p.m. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Hassan Ahmed, I told you to say it so I can hear it.
I did the first time, and the timer was wrong, and I got scared.
Your mic is off.
I need a second. Second by Eileen Harmon, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Thank you, guys, have a great night, everyone.